Good evening. This is Mary, Katie Corsey, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling our meeting to order at 6:36 on Wednesday, May 31, 2023. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Board of Trustees, Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, sorry. It is being recorded at Auburn Public Library in the Mary Room, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all the meetings publicly accessible in a physical location due to the COVID-19 virus. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cablevision. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Okay. So we are going to... Sorry. So, oh, sorry, I didn't finish. This agenda for this meeting was posted on the website on Friday, on May 26, 2023. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Matt Toth.
Present.
Erica Briesacker. Not present. Jonathan Elwitz.
Present.
Vera Karine.
Present.
Steve Redding.
Present.
And I, Mary Decourcy, am present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jean Collins, Library Director. Not present. We will now move to the first item on the agenda, which is the reorganization.
Do you want nominations?
Yes.
Can I nominate Mary Decourcy as Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees next year?
I second.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Any other nominations?
For a further position?
Anybody? Just the chair right now, and then we have to do the other positions. Are you standing or are you voting?
Oh, yeah, I'm voting.
Okay.
Oh, can we vote?
Do we start voting?
Oh, no, no, sorry, sorry. We're just nominating right now. So so far, Matt has nominated me as Chair, Vera his second. Do we have any other nominations for Chair?
I nominate.
No? Okay. So can we... Do we vote on this? I've only done this one time as the Chair. Okay. So can I have a yes for Matt?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Erica Briesack, not present. John?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Steve Redding?
Yes.
And Mary Decourcy, I accept. Thank you. The next position is Vice Chair. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Gary Karone.
And I'll second that.
Great.
Thank you, thank you.
Good. Very good. And can I just do a both? So Matt Toth?
Yes.
Erica is not here. John?
Yes.
Gary, do you accept?
I do.
Steve Redding? Yes. Mary Decourcy, yes, thank you. And the next... Do we call it a clerk or do we call...
Clerk.
Thank you.
We call them clerk.
We call it, sorry.
All right. We call it clerk.
Okay. So can we have a nomination for the clerk position?
I nominate John until continue.
I decline.
Decline.
Oh.
Okay. Anybody else?
Steve.
Are you nominating me?
I am.
Okay. I accept.
All right.
I nominate Steve officially.
Still have a second.
Second.
Okay, great. Now, a second. Sorry. John?
Yes.
Yes. And Vera? She said yes. And Steve, do you accept?
Yes.
And I vote support you 100%. So the next item we have on the agenda is reviewing the meeting minutes from May 3rd. Sorry, did I miss something?
So I think another part of the reorganization that we're supposed to do is set our meeting schedule.
That's right. We did that last year, and I forgot that.
And that's the one thing that's in the bylaws. So you're supposed to announce officers and our meeting schedule.
Thank you, thank you. That's right. Because what we did last year, for everybody's... We talked about having, starting in September, and then going September until typically November, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then we took off December and January, and we came back in February, correct?
March, January.
Okay. So can we talk about the meeting schedule that we would like to have? Yes, sir?
I'd make a motion that we meet quarterly. So September, December, March, and then after the new board ends. I mean, a new board.
Versus once a month. Okay.
Right.
Does anybody support that or have a different position?
I see the schedule that we changed last year to six weekends.
Okay, taking off summer and the early winter months.
And then December, January.
Okay. So you want the same. Anybody else have a position or preference?
For a second.
Let me understand. So we go from September to November. Okay. So that's three meetings. Then we pick it up again in February.
Correct.
Go to May. So that's... That's four meetings, so seven meetings in a year. As opposed to four meetings in a year. The space quarterly. Okay. I understand.
Okay. Do you have a preference?
We have discussion.
Yeah.
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 So in favor of the quarterly meeting, if you look at the limited roles enumerated for the Board of Trustees, I think having four meetings a year is sufficient for us to achieve what our objectives are. Having fewer meetings also will encourage us to be more strategic. So my idea is that if we have four meetings a year, and each meeting has a very clearly defined purpose of what we're trying to achieve in that meeting, then that allows us to focus on those four meetings. If there are issues that come up in the interim, could always have another meeting. We could also make more liberal use of subcommittees. I think the experience this year of forming a collection development policy showed the value of a subcommittee. So if there's something, a big task that we have, that we foresee of an incoming year, we could establish a subcommittee to work on that. That subcommittee can meet in the interim. I fear that if we meet monthly or every month except over the holidays, we look for things to do rather than do the things that we're tasked with doing. So that's my argument.
Okay. Thank you.
Which means?
No, it's okay. Oh, I was gonna say, I would like to keep the same schedule that we have now. Because I feel like there is a lot that we can accomplish. I have some ideas, I think a lot of us are bringing ideas to the table. I agree with making them more strategic this time. I also feel that making them these quarterly will result in marathon sessions, and I'm afraid that that might be a little bit taxing.
I want to keep the same schedule that we have. But the same reason, I don't think four meetings is enough if we've got things that we ought to be doing. And I think the subcommittee is a good idea. But I went from 12, and there were 11 meetings, to the seven. I think that having to do that number of meetings makes complete sense.
Okay.
I'll run to John's point in using time strategically. I think that we should kind of try to put more stuff on the agenda, like discussing what time is going to be on the agenda, so that we can make sure that we are target focused. For example, if we want to discuss the strategic plan, maybe lay out at these meetings. Maybe in the September one, we can look at what we would like to put in the agenda and start.
I agree. Kind of creating a plan that way. Great.
It might be an option that we have strategic meetings and operational meetings that may be, you know, less... Not less important, but less priority, where we just do status updates and that kind of thing. And then, you know, the strategic meetings, then we really dig into some of these bigger strategic objectives. I think that's a compromise on some of the things.
But you know, it might be helpful. Over the next weeks or months, doesn't make a difference, we can meet till September. We can send the Chair ideas for meetings, for things that we ought to do or could be doing for meetings. We've got a lot of other policies that we should be taking out again as well. So that we send some of those up for meetings. I don't know. You talked about the involvement with the community and trying to get some feedback out of community. That survey's a good topic. We talked about things like being able to bring it to the library or library of things. We talked about some of the other items in the collection development policy historically. Talking about how we might be able to do that. So if we send Mary the ideas, then we might have the meetings. And then in September, sit through that, and then we can decide. We don't have to set the meeting schedule today. Or we should maybe give some possibility. We can change that to last year. We added or subtracted meetings. So it's very possible of that. But if you keep the schedule, then we always drop a meeting if we felt that it was unnecessary.
Would that be a suitable compromise, John?
So, you know, for me, it's not about the number of meetings. It's more about the role of the Board. And I think if we have fewer meetings and we are more strategic, then we avoid the risk of getting into areas that the Board should not, which are the operational things related to running the library. I understand the power of precedent and the fact that we've done something one way in the past creates a certain inertia to keep doing it. What I'm arguing for is a significant change. We made a step in that direction last year, but I think we ended up backsliding because we added in meetings that we initially hadn't planned to do. So I see the value in what you're saying in terms of not having every meeting have the same agenda, and some meetings have very focused strategic goals. But then my question would be, if there really isn't anything important to discuss other than updates, then I wonder if that's the best use of everyone's time. Because there is a cost. I mean, there is a cost in terms of the time from Board members, et cetera. The other thing kind of related to that, I think, would be useful would be to have some norms for the Board. You know, one of them is, you know, attendance, obviously. And, you know, people have lives. I think if there are fewer meetings, then it allows people to, I think, reconcile their own personal schedules with their Board's schedules. Because I think the expectation is, you know, unless there's some dire emergency, every Board member should be at every Board meeting, period. Otherwise, you know, I think people should rethink whether or not they want to have more meetings. Just sort of issue. That's all. Thanks.
Any other items for discussion on that? I appreciate everybody's point of view on this, and I love your point about executives. This would be the executive session, and then those subcommittees. But as long as we... If I reached out before our September meeting, asked for items, we are not allowed to deliberate or discuss them. But the first meeting in September, what I understand you to say, is we would choose the items and perhaps, you know, at least, you know, schedule when we want to have benchmarks. We call them an education. When do we want to address certain things that have been proposed? Is that correct? Do I understand that?
Yeah. There's no problem in sending that list out.
No, there's... Yeah. It's just proposed. It's just proposals.
Because that would come from us, and then you're just distributing it to us. You've got a chance to look at them before the meeting. And then decide what we need to...
I agree. And I exist to John's past point about a year ago. He said if we, again, using the term benchmarks or goals, if we have certain goals that we decide upon, that we want to pay attention to in the September meeting, and then stick to that, so that we are strategically and in a unified way moving forward as a Board. So what I heard thus far is John is proposing quarterly. Had very good points. Matt, you, you know, you've talked about the importance of having the time to, you know, address a number of things that we'd like to address in four being very short periods. Steve, your position was to, you know, taking a look at both numbers, but perhaps building in subcommittee meetings that we, where we accomplish goals, you know, that are...
And we call them operational.
Operational.
Yeah.
Okay.
But not to... John, I respect your, you know, the definition you have of operational. That's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah, right.
I'm talking about where we just get together for a quick check-in.
Yeah.
Basically. That's what I'm talking about.
Yes. No, that's fair. And to your point, to be elected into or appointed into a position, you want to sort of get your feet wet and make some things happen and be ambitious.
I do. I think there's lots to cover next year. So I would hate to cram it all into four meetings. I think we need a comprehensive review of the meeting law. And I think we need to discuss what reporting for the strategic plan should look like and build that out. I don't think that's going to be wrapped up in one meeting. I think that's going to be a full Board discussion. I think what Steve wants to present about with regard to community feedback is valuable, and I don't want to lose momentum. We're able to harness feedback and find out. You know, because the fact remains, we are elected. We do represent the community, and we should be doing that. We should be bringing that back here and seeing how we can implement it without getting into operations. But I think our goal isn't tiny. We do have a goal here. So I don't want to sugar that up.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue the same schedule that we had this year. You know, when we tried to add a meeting in December, there was a lot of resistance to that. So adding a meeting is not always easy.
Yeah, okay.
But I think if we keep the schedule that we had this past year, we can catch a meeting for you. It's not a meeting.
That's easy.
So that's my motion. I'm taking this.
Do a second?
I second.
Vera, second. Just gonna do a quick roll call. Matt, you said certainly, yep. Erica, not present. John?
No.
No. Vera?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
And I will support the majority. So we have our meeting schedule set. The next item on the agenda is to review the minutes from May 33rd. Is the Board prepared to do that?
Can I just ask you if you would delay that until we're finished with the collection development policy?
I see no reason that we can't just do... You're talking about just changing the order?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. So do you want to present?
Actually, everybody got all the information.
Yep, yep.
I don't know if anybody needs another copy.
I have the email and everything.
Did you? Okay. Steve, do you? So this was the collection development policy. This was the email that was recommending what we're going to do, how we want to edit this piece.
If we do the first thing and just do the collection development policy, what I would have to do is remove the draft six final everywhere. Remove the draft on the top of it. Add a date approved, and then give you the reconsideration form. The changes were all made to this. The only change that the subcommittee made that made the difference on page...
Matt, can I just help you for a coffee?
Sure.
Thank you. Does anybody else need one?
On page five, the subcommittee recommended periodicals instead of magazines. And so I don't know if we need to have a discussion on that.
I will add very simply, magazines or periodicals. But not all periodicals are magazines. It's more comprehensive than... If you reverse search what a magazine's called in the library, it's periodicals. So we're just going with the status quo.
Okay. Any other input on that?
I didn't get anything, any edits from anyone on this.
Okay.
Now, I'm not going to say that this couldn't use a nice edit. There's...
Like a copy editor, right?
Yeah. But there's no reason that we can't approve this so that we've got something available in case needed.
So do you have any other edits, though?
No. That was really the only thing that the subcommittee...
So you're just removing the draft over the front page, and periodicals was what the subcommittee decided.
Right. And we move all the line numbering added.
Yep. Yes.
See, that right, the line numbering.
I will, while you're doing that, I will interject for the record. Jean, at the last meeting, had edits. We accepted almost all of her edits. The only thing we put back was periodicals for magazines, only because it's the technically accurate, commonly used term for that. Everything else went in, as she suggested.
The responsibility.
And the what?
We didn't accept her responsibility.
Oh, yeah, we didn't accept her responsibility because, again, that's the role of the Board of Trustees.
That's right.
Input is welcome.
Well, input ought to be... It ought to be a part of that process. That's the same way it should have been with the strategic plan.
Absolutely.
And so, yeah, that's sort of a given. Okay. So I'll change that. I'll do the date of approval. Make final copies, and then that's the collection development policy. But before we finish that, let's just do the other little section. We need this sent this out.
Thank you. Thanks.
What the subcommittee did on this, we used Jean's outline, and then we added in the top section of that, "Have you read the library's collection development policy?" Because that was not there. And we left everything else in. We thought about taking out "I am completing this request" form as a resident because it says it up above, but there's no harm in leaving it there. And in the materials questions section, we crossed out the publisher and the shelf numbering section of APL. It seemed like that was just a lot of extra work. But we did add, "Have you read the entire book, seen the entire film, listened to complete recording?" Second, "Do you see anything valuable about this material? Are you aware of a critical opinion, for example, published reviews of this material? What other materials of quality or relevance on this subject would you recommend?" So that's what we're talking about adding to the second section of the material in question.
And you're removing number seven is publisher?
Yeah, and number eight.
And number eight, which is shelf number, section at APL? And then 10 is, "Have you examined the entire resource?"
Yeah, actually, that's, "Have you read the entire book, seen the entire film, listened to complete recording?"
So we're replacing that.
Yeah, replacing it, okay.
And we want to be specific. It's just so that if people do raise objections, they do so thoughtfully and with consideration, and not just because they saw one line in a book that offended them or heard about one's mention of a movie or book that offended them. I think it's good to have people think and suggest alternatives, and they're going to challenge something.
Just added a couple of thoughts. So the first thing is that this form itself is only valuable insofar as it provides information to the person who's ultimately going to be making the decision, which is Jean.
Yes.
So that's the first thing. And then the second is that there's not right or wrong answers to any of these questions. So even the point about, "Do you see anything valuable about the material?" I could answer, yes, I see a lot valuable about the material, but the things that I see as questionable outweigh that. Therefore, this thing should be removed. Similarly, I don't think it's necessary, personally, that somebody is aware of critical opinion or published reviews of the material, nor do I think it's necessary that somebody has read the entire book, seen the entire film. If there were something in that book which was so objectionable that it should not be included in our collection, to me, there are cases in which that could be sufficient. So, again, I don't necessarily object to these questions as long as everyone understands that these aren't... If somebody has not read the entire book or if somebody sees anything valuable, then that automatically means that their request is in that one because I don't think that's the case.
If that's, you know, I accept what, you know, your perspective on that. But if there's something that's in there that in context means one thing, that taken out of context means another, shouldn't there be some kind of check on that?
So there might be cases. But, again, I would argue that, you know, there could be cases in which something... There is no context that's going to change the meaning of a certain thing in that book.
I agree. But there are probably other cases where the context does change the objectionable nature of that. So, you know, it goes both.
Yes. I was more concerned that the way this is phrased, somebody could look at this and say, "Well, since I can't answer that I've read the entire book, I can't answer that I am aware of critical opinion and I've read reviews, therefore, I can't submit this request because I've not met the conditions that are necessary." And I think... So what we're not saying is that in order to file the request, you must have done all these things. It's simply asking these questions so that the person who's making the decision has that information. And it may influence their decision because they believe that these things are important. But we're not making these preconditions.
I respectfully, sorry. I respectfully object with it to that. I disagree. Because I think if someone takes it upon themselves to remove a book or a movie for accessibility to everyone in the community, there should be a high bar. They should have read the entire book or seen the entire movie and made a decision based on its entirety that this one piece that was objectionable to them is so damned that nobody in the community deserves to have access via the public library. So I don't think it's wrong to raise a high bar. I would also add that Jean has this on her questionnaire via, "Have you examined the entire resource?", which is a little bit more explicit about it so that, you know, you need to consume the thing to which you're objecting in the proper format. Sniffing the book thoroughly won't cut it.
Although, I mean, there are... So say there's a case, there's a piece of material, a book, that you start reading, and you find something there so reprehensible that you do not want to continue to read that. Seems to me that we shouldn't force somebody to consume something that they find so reprehensible and objectionable, and they don't think should be part of their community's library, saying, "No, no, you must watch the whole thing, or you must read the whole thing before you can give an opinion." I just don't think that that should be a condition.
But I think if you stop at the part which is offensive or objectionable, you just return the book or the movie rather than trying to remove it for the whole community. Because one, you know, what might be objectionable to me might be art to somebody else or history or a valuable lesson in one form or another. So I think if someone wants to take it away from the community, they should go the extra mile and fully justify why that particular piece renders the remainder of the material not worthy of sitting on the shelves.
But I think it's also just, it's a question. We're not really forcing anybody to do anything, but I think we're trying to... The director would want to get an assessment as to whether or not, like, how deep this person dug to be able to make this decision or whether, as we said, some sort of surface trend or viewpoint is controlling whether or not a book will be removed. So we can ask if someone has read the entirety. Obviously, they don't have to. But it's just to be able to glean the information for the director to pursue the conversation with the individual who's making that suggestion. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I think it also has to do with the nature of this form. You know, as John, as you said, there's no right or wrong answers.
Right.
It's not a checklist. It's an information mechanism. And what I... I guess the question I have is, when Jean, who would be the decision maker on this, looks at this, makes a decision on it, is that documented anywhere? Were there reasons for which she made the decision?
Yeah, we could certainly ask. And I would...
That's a good question.
But I would like to hear about it as the Board of Trustees. I would like to hear, is there... Are there a lot of objections to books? How are we handling them? But I don't think there's anything that she necessarily presents now because we've only heard of one anecdotal case.
Right, right.
She told me about two cases that she's had since she's been here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, it doesn't happen that often. And she's resolving that.
I don't have any trouble getting rid of the, "Are you aware of critical opinion?"
Yeah, we can get rid of that.
I don't see, you know...
Okay. All good points.
I think, you know, the other thing that we'd want to avoid is people who heard about the book or the movie and drew on other sources and have heard that it's offensive, reading it up, which hasn't happened here, but does happen.
But it does happen. With your window shut, you can see how often it happens.
Any other discussion? Joy, I understand that what you're suggesting is if we made a motion, it would be to accept it. And then you stated something about, since September, you said something about reviewing it later or something.
No, it's not... Well, I mean, we can... If at one point somebody decides that they believe there are certain edits, which we actually could have done had anybody responded to it, it wouldn't have mattered. We're talking about edits. We're not talking about substantial material. We're talking about whether libraries are capital or small L or things like that. But for now, we would accept this, but getting rid of the draft and all of that, the lines. And then that is the policy for the Auburn Public Library. And then this sheet needs to be redone. I'll ask Jean whether she wants, or you can, Mary, I don't care. Ask her whether she wants, or Vera, I don't care. Or I'll be happy to redo this so that we have it.
You want to make it pretty?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all yours.
Okay, thank you.
You know, one thing that would be... You know, one thing that would be useful here is to have a road test of this, a real world road test, but I know those, you know, you can't create something like that, right? But maybe we should, maybe we should talk with Jean and say, if a case comes up, and you have occasion to use this, could you, the next library board meeting, put that on the agenda? And we talk about how useful this was, or how, where did you find you had issues? Because that's when it comes out when you actually use it.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this true? I like that.
Good point.
Then I'd make a motion to accept the collection development policy dated 5/31/23.
I second.
Agreed. And a second, just to do a quick roll call now. Does yes, Giara?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Steve, yes, Mary, yes. Thank you, everyone.
And I'll get a copy.
Yay!
That does definitely good, right?
Good boy!
Team work, team work, yes, the G work.
All right, as Mr. Matt told, your suggestion was to move the minutes to the next item. So have everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Well, yes, and I asked for this. Well, I, we need to make a motion, I guess. Except for this, before we can do anything about it, right?
Okay. Have we had a chance to review them, though?
Oh.
Let's just take a minute. Remember, we had a marathon meeting, the last meeting, so if everybody can just look it over.
Give them a copy.
Yes, I do. Over here, there you go. Do you need one to?
I wrote one already.
You can never look on my phone, so I have to have paper. So just the meat of it wasn't in the notes, which is, again, she began to present, but I did object to it because of the length of it and the fact that we had no reference point in number three. And then number six, I just made note that what I actually said, when the chair provided a report on her meeting with the town manager, as requested by the full board in February, the chair noted that she had exchanged subsequent correspondence with the town manager, and has requested a follow-up meeting. But then I put comma, however, the BOT had to meet during April school vacation to formally address an open meeting law complaint filed on April 5, 2023. So it wasn't that the town manager and I just put off the meeting, it was the fact that that meeting, we had to, within a certain set period of time, respond to that complaint, which we did, and we came together and addressed the complaint. Other than that, that's my edits that I would request.
The edit I was going to make was to point seven. Ms. Hollis responded to a request from Mr. Tofa copies of the library employee contracts. I believe it was specifically union contracts, which she mentioned, it was a union contract.
Okay.
And it says, by referring him to the town administration, which can provide guidance on filing an open document request. I think it's just more accurate to say what she said, which was, in response, she told him he can file a Freedom of Information request.
Okay.
So in the interest of technical accuracy, I would just reflect that.
Okay, can you repeat that again, I'm just writing it down?
Sorry.
No, no, what you said was, he can file.
A Freedom of Information request.
Thank you.
See, isn't your Freedom of Information request a federal mechanism?
You can use it for municipal things, too.
Okay. Any other feedback on that?
Well, I guess this, and I guess it's probably section three
Yeah.
that I'm most concerned with. I went back and looked at that meeting, and that was probably the most contentious meeting. It's the most oppositional behavior that I've seen in 15 years. And it, there's got to be some mechanism to reflect the fact that we were asked to sit and, without ever being given a copy of this material, to listen to 12 pages being read, like children in a classroom. And that I didn't say anything in the beginning, when you asked to please stop that reading and give us some kind of a summary. Almost all of this material is in prior monthly reports. There's nothing new in there. There wasn't anything that really related to the outcomes of that work. And then to be told that I'm not going to pass that material out, that behavior has got to be historically noted somewhere. And it doesn't have to have a lot of detail, but it can't be as though it didn't exist.
Right.
And I, that, I think that meaning is worth taking a look at, because it suggests an awful lot of difficulty. And I think, I know where that difficulty is going to be pointed at.
Okay.
But I think there's got to be some different language in that that kind of reflects the real sadness that I felt after all the time that we've asked and requested updates to be given that kind of material a minute before the meeting, and then not even be willing to share it. Suzette asked for a copy, I gave it to her. I believe that as long as I had my hands on a copy during a meeting, that was public material. That's why I make sure that everybody else had one of those.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We should probably state that she did refuse to hand out copies of the strategic plan report, whatever you call it.
Anything?
Yeah, which is, which would also be subject to further request, were we so inclined?
Yeah.
But I think it is relevant to what happened in the meeting.
Okay. So in terms of, you know, edits, I'm not sure where, so obviously, the meeting we held before the election, and then John was the clerk at that point, who, who edits this? Because I can do it where, but I don't want to step on anyone's toes in terms of, but naturally, I want to hear from everybody and take notes, but I guess who would be the person that amends it? Would that be me, would that be Steve, would that be John, yeah?
So my suggestion, first of all, none of the minutes from any of the meetings are transcripts of the meetings.
Right.
So, you know, the goal is always to capture the essence of the discussion.
Right, but you always did.
And if others have suggestions, those are welcome. I'm happy to try to incorporate those, but I think in order for this to be done in that kind of rational manner, the easiest thing would be for anyone who has specific language that they want to propose to send me that, but we not vote on these minutes.
That's what I was going to say.
If you have specific, and don't, it would be helpful if you didn't give me a sense of what you wanted, but give me specific language you want to include. If people have different language, I can bracket those.
Right.
And then at the next meeting, I can present those revised minutes, and we can, the board can vote on them at that time. My personal view is that the minutes of a meeting aren't a place to kind of shuttle scores or kind of, my, I guess my point would be, in minutes for the historical record, we take the high road. The video of the meeting exists for those who want to get the blow-by-blow, but obviously, everyone has their own opinion on that. And if people want to propose edits, you know, put those together and put them forward. And I wish you well, back towards you.
Thank you.
Well, nobody's ever raised any questions about any minutes you've ever had.
No, no.
They've really been very well done.
Excellent.
And they did take, they gave the essence of the meeting. This meeting was so different.
Yeah, it was.
And when you say a place for grievances, I don't, I think there's a historical record that is important. That situation was very unusual. And it needs to be recorded as such.
Yeah, yeah. I think the easiest way to do it, and I agree with John, I can send him, but the language could be as easy as the board requested, the director, you know, you know, denied that request, things like that. It doesn't have to be, as you say, blow-by-blow. But I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's any vendetta. I think that, I think the bottom line is, it should reflect what the meeting, it was, it was two hours and something minutes. And I think that the contention that you referenced was part of the reason with the, you know, a lot of interruption, interruption. I mean, we really wanted to come together and review the collections policy, and we, I guess that was a surprise at the beginning of the meeting. I didn't expect a 12-page, you know, reading of a document. So that kind of threw me off. And just to be transparent with the board, makes me very uncomfortable and an impolite way to interrupt anyone when they're speaking. So to stop the director mid, I think she was on page two, and ask her how many pages, and that was very awkward for me, but I think it's the role of the chair to respect the time of the board. And again, it wasn't intended to be contentious, but again, we have a very talented board of committed members, and I don't expect anyone to read to us for 15, 20 minutes of a meeting where I value your time. So do we move to accept the minutes and provide edits? Like, how do we move forward?
We can do that in September.
Okay.
Accept the minutes in this, September.
Okay, okay.
Mary, I was thankful when you finally did that.
Okay, sorry to slow on.
I was sitting over there, and I was trying to decide, do I stay here or do I leave?
Right.
And I appreciated you at least raising the question, is there a way to provide some kind of a summary for this material?
Yeah, so that we could actually have a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. So again, we don't have a director's report or expenditures. Any other under number six, old or new business that anyone wants to raise or discuss? And it's, again, the discussion items, the pleasure of the board?
I have one.
Okay.
The director made certain comments at the end of the meeting that I'd like to be able to get transcribed from the tape, probably. And that was when the person indicated that she could speak to anyone anytime she wanted, and that'd be covered by privilege, and that we never could respond to any of that. And it was, it was pretty far-fetched. The authority that the director has and we're trustees has zero authority to do anything. And I think that that, I want, I'd like to see that transcribed. I don't know how the best way to do that.
What I'll ask is our tech team, how would you go about that? I think that has value.
It has, well, we got to the business where we have to, I forget the wording on that, something about collaboration, but she does not have to collaborate, but we have to collaborate. And I'd like to see that in writing. I'd actually like to have, if we can decide that September, have legal counsel take a look at that.
Okay, okay.
That, I believe, is covered, I believe what she's referencing is the open meeting law. And it seems like there has been some misunderstanding. We've started digging into it.
Lots of misinformation, right, yeah.
There's a lot of information online, but there was confusion about what is core, there was confusion about what we can discuss. So I want to take this summer to kind of dig into it, get as much information, and bring it back to the board, so that we can all level set and be on the same page about what we can talk about, what we can't talk about, and who can and can't hang out, which is to say, we can all hang out, we just can't break the rules while doing it. And there are rules, and there are fortunately, there are state-level lawyers that are happy to answer questions about that. But I think that that's what all of those references are to, are the open meeting law.
Right.
And this collective bargaining agreement, I've gone through that quickly. I don't see any place in here where we're not allowed to say the word volunteer, and not allowed to say the word librarian. So I must be misreading something somewhere.
Now I reviewed it, I found the same.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know, you know, those are things we've been told, but all of a sudden, there's a document, and I don't know that we've been accurately told.
Right, and I would state for the record, we, as the Board of Trustees, obviously appreciate the entirety of the library staff. And, you know, the union is very important. We want to make sure we don't overstep,
Right.
but we also want to make sure that we are not misunderstanding what we can and can't say, for example, volunteer.
Yeah, right, right. I do want to add, though, as much as it was excruciating to push through the collection policy discussions in the last two formal meetings, the barriers were tough, but I will say that the director provided excellent feedback for us so that we could meet again as a team. And I did, when I originally met with the town manager, I stated that that first meeting, when we first went over it, was extremely helpful. However, just what it takes to get to that point of being really constructive, that's my concern, not the input of the director, because it was excellent, and we were able to apply it right away in our free meeting. So anything else that anyone wants to add or discuss to Matt's point about the collection policy, or the, or the, the last item that you had mentioned in terms of the contract? No?
I did ask Dad about the board health model allowing home food. He looked at me like I had three heads, so I'm not sure there is such a rule.
Okay.
If anyone knows otherwise, please correct me.
Okay.
I was not aware of any such rules, so, so bring on muffins, or what have you.
Yeah.
You know, I will also say, referencing the last, the last meeting and the 12-page report, and looking for something, I happen to be looking at for a plan, I'm going to be looking at other libraries as well, but they have their strategic plan reporting for every single year. They have their plan, and then they have links for every single year's reports, and they use a template. And it's condensed, right? There's goals, there's stuff taken towards the goals, there's some resources. And I think that if we put together something like that, it might make it easier, so that nobody, you know, so Jean's not under pressure to do a 12-page report.
Right.
Because we want to do that. And it should be easier to present, it should be easier for all of us to work with.
And are you suggesting the link piece would be something that would be available on the Auburn Public Library website? That would be neat. So if you were a patron, you could just literally punch the link and learn about it, you wouldn't have to look for a printed.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You go on their website, and it's, you know, there's the collections policy, there's the strategic plan, and then there's every single year strategic reporting. And it's like they don't take on the entirety of the strategic plan. It's what they worked on that year, and I think it's really, it's bite-sized. It's easy, it's not too much pressure.
It's really interesting to read some of that.
Yeah. I think if we see best practices anywhere else in the state, there's no harm in seeing if we can apply them here, because like, why wouldn't we want best practices here?
Well, and I think the important part is, we can't, we could ask, but then that's, everything that we've asked is always interpreted. everything that we've asked is always interpreted as a demand.
Right.
And so what we need to do is to talk to the town manager, and reestablish the fact that we can write some goals, that he can incorporate in the way Julie had suggested she was willing to do, so that we can actually have some of those goals in there, and then when we ask about those goals, it's legitimate.
Okay, and transparent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to reach out to a Brooklyn Library Board of Trustees member, just to find out, who sets the goals? Is it the library director, is it the Board of Trustees, is it both? Like, how did they come up with that?
See, right now, at least the way that it was, I can't say that it's going to do it that way or not, but Julie had said that we could write goals.
That would be asked.
But she has a set of goals for everybody in the division, and that's what she's looking at, and then we, the other goals, those could be reported to us. It gets really messy on what we're allowed to ask or not allowed to have. In normal situations, somebody would just share that stuff, and we'd just talk about it, and we wouldn't have all this.
Right, right. That's true.
There wouldn't be the need for it, it could be much easier.
Any other discussion on that item? So before we end the meeting, I just wanted to reiterate what we talked about earlier, so if the beginning, the first September that is able to be meet, that we could meet, sorry, is September 6th, which is a Wednesday, at 6:30, and then what I heard from the board is people would be able to send me suggestions, and I would say, anytime over the summer would be fine, and I'll just collect them, and I will list them, and then I would just ask that, you know, I'd send out a reminder the week before the meeting, these are the items, we can't discuss it, because again, it's, those need to be saved for the actual meeting, but if anybody wants to add any items, and then we utilize the September 6th meeting to prioritize the setup goals. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Are people okay with September 6th being our next meeting at 6:30 here at the Marion Room?
Sure, I'm guessing I'll be here. I have a question.
Sure.
Do these escorts start with the, tonight's minutes, or do they start?
I believe they start in the Monday evening. That's how I would differ.
Richard, I've been taking that.
Yeah. You know what I did in one particular case, when we actually, I believe we interviewed you for the board, and we didn't have our milk taker, what I did is I watched the video, and I provided Deb Greymar with the minutes, so, you know, that's a way to do it, too. So if we don't have any further items, it is now 7:29, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Vera, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Steve, thank you, everyone.